This regular meeting of Independent School District 535 School Board is called to order at 5:30 PM, Tuesday, August 2nd, 2022, in room 137 of the Edison Building. This board acknowledges that this site and all RPS sites are situated on the ancestral land of the Dakota people. We honor the Dakota nations and the sacred land of all Indigenous peoples. Interested members of the public are welcome and encouraged to view this meeting remotely at youtube.com/ISD535, where the livestream video may be found. Present at this meeting are school board members, Superintendent Kent Pekel, a non-voting ex-officio member, and Assistant School Board Clerk, Ms. Michelle Severson. Ms. Severson, will you please call the roll?
Thank you, Director Amundson.
Here.
Clerk Barlow.
Here.
Director Garcia.
Here.
Treasurer McLaughlin.
Here.
Chair Marvin.
Here.
Vice Chair Nathan.
Here.
And Director Workman.
Here.
Thank you.
At this time, we offer the opportunity to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
2.0, approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Move, approve, and second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor of approving the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda is approved. We have no speakers who signed up to speak to the board this evening, so we will move on to 5.0, the consent agenda. Are there any issues that board members want removed for separate consideration?
Move, approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The consent agenda is approved. Then, we're moving right on to 6.0, the focus topic, adult learning through community education. Dr. Pekel.
Chair Marvin and Directors of the Board, as you are aware and as we are going to talk about in a moment, we are in transition to a new board set of focus topics starting in the fall that will be aligned with our strategic plan. And in the meantime, we have taken the opportunity this summer to ask board members what they would like to hear about as we continue the work here in Rochester. And so, this subject was one that multiple board members said they haven't had enough chance to learn about and get engaged in. And so, I am thrilled to turn it over to Amy Icke, who's our Executive Director of Community Education and Partnerships, to kick us off with a look at adult learning through community education. And I really want to thank all of you who have made time to come and join us. This board meeting may not be as full of action items, but in many ways, that makes it an even better opportunity for us to take a pause and do some learning. So, thanks for being here. I'll turn it over to Amy.
Thank you, Dr. Pekel. Board members, thank you for having us here tonight. As you see before you, we have a number of things to talk to you about in terms of the variety of opportunities that Community Ed offers to the adults in our community. So, we are going to tag-team this a little bit and tell you about four program areas. And we have some of our participants here with us tonight to tell you a little bit about their story. We know that you enjoy hearing directly from people who receive our services. And, there we go. So, a little bit of context. We were actually the fourth state in the country to start community education. Many, many years ago, over 50 years ago, and the mission at that point, and it remains today, to foster learning in our communities and also to increase the use of our school facilities outside of school time. And we do that in a number of ways. Community Ed requires a licensed director and an advisory council, and we serve all ages across a variety of programs. We're going to focus tonight on our adult programs. I would be remiss if I didn't let you know that we've had some impact to our programs due to COVID, but you'll see that we are on a quick recovery back up in the direction that we were headed before COVID began. Just a few comments from the participants that take part in our program. We hear a lot about not only the content that they learn about, but also the relationships that they form by participating with us, both with their fellow students and with their instructors. So, we'll talk tonight about four areas of adult community education. We'll talk about our Adult Enrichment Program, where we do pure enrichment-type things, but also skill-building. And then, we'll talk about our program for adults with exceptional abilities and the connections that they build through that program. We'll talk to you about adult literacy and career development out of our Hawthorne Center, and we'll highlight our parenting and child development courses. So, with us tonight, Karen Fox, our Program Coordinator with Adult Enrichment. On the other end of the table, Stephanie Concrete, our Program Coordinator, and Jesse and his mom, Beverly, have joined us as participants in our Adults with Exceptional Abilities Program. Nadine, in the center, is our manager at Hawthorne for adult literacy. And she has with her Yvonne, who was both a student in our program and is now a professional in RPS. And then, Erica, not last, or last but not least, our manager of Early Childhood Services, which also includes our adult programs. And we have two of our dads here to talk about their experience in our dad's class. So, I'm going to hand it over to Karen.
Thank you, Amy. My name is Karen Fox, and I'm the Adult Enrichment Coordinator. The purpose of Adult Enrichment is to provide the opportunity for people to learn new skills, make new connections, and to explore our community. We provide classes for all adults ages 18 and up. We offer a 20% discount for all senior citizens as well as military members. Currently, we provide over 700 classes annually, including 50 effortless excursions, excuse me, which include trips to the theater, festivals, State Capitol, and Excel Energy Center. Most of our classes are offered several times each season. Our classes are divided into 14 different categories: family, finance, fitness, history, hobbies, home, language, nature, safety, sustainability, taste, technology, trips, and wellness. We publish two catalogs each year. Our fall catalog runs September through January, and our winter-spring catalog runs February through June. Our classes are held at Northrup and some public school buildings, as well as partnership sites, such as 125 Live, Homestead Arts Farm, Tunnel Mill Crafts, Corey Hill, and Oxbow Park. Approximately 10% of our classes are offered online only. Our latest partnership resulted in the creation of The Wright School, reimagining tomorrow's environment. The mission is to provide an inclusive and welcoming place that fosters vibrant communities by encouraging creativity and sustainability through the teaching of diverse historical and contemporary skills. Our thought partners are DMC, RPU, Earth Fest, and Lower Town Neighborhood Association. We currently offer over 50 classes, such as beekeeping, wood carving, electric vehicles, organic gardening, adapting to our changing climate, and solar energy. We are currently creating classrooms specifically for these classes at Northrup. We are excited for our new kitchen at the beautiful Dakota Middle School. Youth or adults will have cooking and baking classes there. We will also host coffee and conversation classes for senior citizens this fall, hosted by our district chef, Travis Pierce, along with students from the University of Minnesota Rochester. Community Education shares this space with student nutrition services, who will be using the kitchen for menu planning and staff development. SLICE is a state-of-the-art learning kitchen, designed for our participants to develop and improve their culinary talents. We have six learning stations with complete cookware, utensils, and smallwares, flat-top ranges, ovens, microwave at each station, compact commercial dishwashers for fast and easy cleanup, seated space for demonstrations and discussions, and 40 65-inch monitors. So, join us soon for a class at SLICE. We know you will be impressed. Thank you.
Good evening. As Amy said, my name is Stephanie Concrete, and I am the coordinator for the Adults with Exceptional Abilities Program. I'm very proud that that's what we call it in many districts. It's still referred to as the Adults with Disabilities, and we really like to focus on the exceptional abilities of our participants. We've actually been a part of this community for more than 40 years, which, if you think that Community Ed started here 50 years ago, that's pretty good going. So, enrichment classes offer a wide range of opportunities for adults with intellectual and developmental disabilities to socialize, to learn, and to have fun. And many of our participants register for multiple classes, sometimes having to choose between two on the same evening. And, yeah, they, it's a huge part of their social life, and many of them really, really enjoy attending. It brings them out of isolation, and it has a huge impact, not only on them, but on their families. Speaking to innovation during COVID, it's not just during COVID, but innovation in the area of special needs programming is a fine balance between preserving the old and embracing the new. I say that because many individuals who attend our programs are extremely attached to the routines of attending the same things that they have attended for many, many years. And if you take those things away, you hear about it. So, we are very attached to some of the things that we do, but we are also very intentional about innovating and introducing new things as much as we possibly can. As with everyone, the restrictions of the pandemic brought some new challenges and opportunities to innovate, and we quickly adapted by offering online opportunities. Those were in a couple of different ways. We had real-time online activities through Google Meet, where people could interact with each other, play games, socialize. We even had a online virtual Valentine's dance, which was for us and many other districts in Minnesota. So, that was pretty wild. So, we didn't have too many from Rochester attend, but some of them did, and it was, it was fun. And then, we also did pre-recorded activities, where I would make videos of different craft and art activities or cooking classes. And then, the participants would get a link. They could watch whenever they wanted to do it at their own leisure, and we would deliver the supplies to their homes, so that especially those who were more medically vulnerable didn't have to go outside even to go and get the supplies that they needed. So, we offered that service to them. Collaboration to meet the participant needs with limited resources. Working together with other Rochester-based organizations has been a huge benefit, and most notably is our collaboration with Rochester Parks and Recreation with their Accessible Rec program. Sharing resources has made a big difference. So, we do dances together. They use the school buildings and don't have to pay exorbitant prices to hire a facility. We have picnics together and use the picnic shelters and don't have to pay to use those. So, it's a really good collaboration. It makes it more affordable for the participants, and it also improves the crossover between the different groups, and especially for those who are transitioning from the Parks and Rec, because they start from so young. And my program is just for adults, so it's a great place for those young adults to meet and, you know, move into some of the things that I do. So, that's been very successful, and we continue to do those things. Experience in our community. As we plan programs and activities, we're always looking for opportunities to get out of the school buildings and into the wider Rochester community. We're regularly seen at local movie theaters, bowling alleys, apple orchards, riding stables, and other outdoor activities. And recently, we have held several activities which were sponsored, not just, they were sponsored by our program, but they were also marketed through general community ed and other areas. And we did a first-time summer ice cream social in the Goose Egg Park behind Northrup, and we invited the neighbors from the Lower Town neighborhood there and Samaritan Bethany Arbiteris residents. And we had about 50 people come who were nothing to do with our program. So, it was a really good neighborhood mixer. And then, last but not least, building relationships among peers and with caring adults. And I end with relationships because I really believe this is the most important role of our program. We are sometimes asked why we have a special needs program when the emphasis today is on inclusion and unified programs. And we wholeheartedly endorse such programs, and our participants are welcome to attend any community education class that they choose. However, it's clearly evident that we are a community. However, it's clearly evident that we are a community of individuals who love to get together and enjoy each other's company in a setting where everyone feels safe and welcome and accepted. And so that's why we get together. So many of our participants and instructors have been friends, literally, for decades, and they look forward to seeing each other at our events. And yet, at the same time, new participants are welcomed into the group and report quickly feeling at home. Never has this been more evident than when we resume meeting in person after the pandemic restrictions. And so now, it's my great honor to introduce Jesse and Beverly Ofsti, who have kindly agreed to come and share a little bit about how our program has impacted their family.
Hi. I'm usually just known as Jesse's mom because most people know Jesse. Jesse grew up in the Cassin Manorville area, attended school there, but he did go to the rail program in Rochester for his last three years and enjoyed that very much. As soon as he graduated from there, we had a big change in our family. His dad decided that he no longer wanted to be with the family and left us to fend for ourselves, which we have done greatly and done a good job at, and we're doing okay now. Jesse had a very difficult time with that whole thing. He missed his dad very much. He missed the family very much. You know, he lost his house. He lost his campground. The campground community was a huge part of Jesse's life because he was really on a level playing field there with the people who he'd grown up with for 22 years. They all knew him, and he knew them, and everybody kind of watched over Jesse to keep him safe. He could participate in swimming and bingo and jump into a baseball game or a volleyball game anytime he wanted to. Yeah, and the kids, everybody was very accommodating for Jesse. They all knew Jesse. Even the weekend people that would come just every few times, a few weekends a year, would remember him year after year after year. And he lost that huge community. And now we are living in Rochester. And I said, I need to find a way to replicate that for Jesse. We've found a place to live that has the exercise and things right in the building, so we could do all that. But community education was a huge part of that. My daughter, who has worked in group homes for many years, said you need to sign up with the community education in Rochester where she had some of her clients go. We did, and he was a little apprehensive. He was having deep depression at the time, still struggling to make sense of what all was going on with his life. And we went to a few classes. He didn't want to participate. He wanted to go home. He didn't want to do a lot of the five motor skills, things that you use your hands for, painting, drawing, writing. He wanted me to do it for him. He didn't really want to participate. Then COVID hit, and we were locked down for two years. And that was very difficult. Thankfully, some of the things were online, and Stephanie did come and deliver projects to the house for Jesse to do. We kept in touch, and when everything opened back up again, he went back to the classes again. It wasn't quite as apprehensive as the first time. He'd had a couple of years to grow and get used to his new life. He was happy to get out of the house again, and now he participates. He actually starts working on the five motor skill activities without being prompted. He's doing what everybody else in the class is doing, which is the biggest way to teach him, best way to get him to do anything, is if other people are doing it, he wants to be included. He doesn't ask me to do it for him anymore. He no longer asks to go home through the entire class. He enjoys all of the field trips that we go on with the class, the movies, and the Ironwood Springs. He gets to go on a, what do you call it? The ride down at the field, the wagon ride, which is something he used to do at the campground. So he gets to do that again. When he enters a classroom, people in the classroom will say, hi, Jesse. They know him, and he is welcomed into the classroom by the other classmates because they know of him. And he's starting to get to know a lot of the people there. It's a little easier for him with the girls because he has a huge flirt. He likes to call girls pretty quite often. He's very good about people wearing any kind of flags on their shirts or they're wearing some khaki. He'll salute them. He makes friends easily wherever he goes. And he wanted to tell you what your favorite classes were. We talked about it before we came. His favorite classes were Jeopardy, where he answered a lot of the questions. He knew some of the answers to questions that I didn't know what they were, but he typed them in, and he knew exactly what they were. That and the field trips. He really enjoys the apple orchard, the movies, the riding. Yes, he'd rode his first horse ever in his life. We'd never get him on a horse before. He was always too scared to do it. I signed him up thinking, we'll get there, he'll watch other people do it, and he won't want to get on the horse. He was jumped right to the front of the line and wanted to get on before everybody else, which was shocking to me still. But this program has really made a huge difference in his life, brought him out of that depression, given him a meaning in life, given him a place to go, friends to have, and had lots of good activities to do and work on. So thank you. The apple orchard, yes. We go for walks, yes. And we rode the horses. You had to tap her twice. That's right. That's right.
Thank you so much.
Say thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I like your glasses.
Do you know that, Jesse?
It's the waving flag.
Oh, I love them.
He's telling you, flag, and he's telling you it's waving.
Okay. Awesome.
I am Nadine Holthaus. I'm the program manager at Hawthorne Education Center with the Adult and Family Literacy Program in Rochester. Adults who come to Hawthorne have to have a literacy need. So we're working with under-skilled adults, and that literacy need has to be in reading, writing, math, or they can be English as second language learners. We have a variety of classes that go on. Oh, and also GD students. So if they've dropped out of high school, they can come back and get their high school equivalency exam with us. We offer a variety of classes throughout the day. We have seven levels of English. We have multiple levels of math, reading, writing. And we run Monday through Thursday from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. because our families, students who come have families, they work, and then they also are going to school. So we try to really meet their needs. COVID has really pushed us to do online learning, which many of our families, who we weren't reaching, our students we weren't reaching, are now participating. So we, you know, kind of pushed us in the deep end of the pool. So I mean, we see that as a real plus. The other program we have is our college and training program. And that's where we partner with workforce development and RCTC. And those are the major partners, but we have employer partners, too. So we get people ready to transition to college. And we have two focus groups, pathways, which is our healthcare pathway. Surprising because Mayo is one of our partners. That's a big surprise. And our administrative office professional pathway. And we kind of partnered with Homestead County originally with that, but Mayo also snatches up some of those people and gets them into their healthcare administrative office, too. But we also do para because we want to support and build our own from within. And so we provide classes at Hawthorne in a safe and supportive environment for those students. And I'm just going to talk a little bit about that because it has been awarded nationally recognized as a really innovative programming and partnership where we have articulations at Hawthorne. RCTC has given us articulations, so students can be in a safe environment to try college, the rigor of college, but get extra support during this time. And I don't say this in a bad way, but sometimes we'll say it's a safe place to fail because, I don't know, if you have, once you get into, go to college and you fail, it's hard to go back to college because you get into financial aid issues, and you just dig yourself into a hole that's hard to come out of. So we just, that hole isn't there, and we just pick them back up and wrap them back around and work on what was causing the issue. You know, is it childcare? Is it transportation? Is it, you know, time management? You know, let's work on what the issue is. Let's put resources in place so that you are successful. So then when we transition you to RCTC, you'll be successful. And then you can move on into your career. You can get employment that supports your family and themselves. So now I can jump right around to my mission. Our mission is to move people into good-paying jobs with benefits. That's what we want. We want to be, and Mayo Clinic and Homestead County will say, we have been a great resource to diversify their workforce because we have lovely people. So like I said, we partner with us and RCTC workforce and Mayo and Homestead County, but we also partner with other local nursing homes and any business that will partner with us, we'd love to partner with them. So one of our participants, a wonderful student who participated in our early childhood, our family literacy program, as well as our college and training, will tell you a little bit about her journey through Hawthorne.
Good night, everybody. My name is Yvonne Hernandez Vargas. I have two children, and now I'm pregnant with my third one. I started family literacy program at Hawthorne Education Center in 2018. I was in the program for about three years, where I took various classes, such as reading, writing, computer, math, and more. These places and programs helped me to improve my English as a second language and helped me to have experience for my future and to be able to get a job. At the same time, I learned my son did. He had a great improvement in his language during the time he was in the program. After I completed classes, I decided to get a job. Hawthorne and Community Education, which is family literacy program, helped me by giving me the opportunity to do my internship with them. During my internship, there were some job offers to which I applied. I was finally hired at Hawthorne in July 2021 in the senior program specialist position, in which I completed one year last month. I love and enjoy my job as I see myself reflected in the students I help as I was once in their shoes. In general, these places and programs help many people. I say this from my experience since I am proof of it. Thank you for your time.
Hi, Erica Schimacher. I am the Early Childhood Family Services Program Manager. And Early Childhood Family Services encompasses quite a bit within our district. It has Rochester Public School preschools, our early childhood family education programming, our early childhood screening, and Rochester family literacy. And we began almost 50 years ago, so we're getting ready to start celebrating 50 years within Rochester Public Schools. And the purpose of ECFE is to provide education for parents with young children ages zero to five. We are dual generational in our approach, and so we are very lucky that we get to see both, not only the child and the family, almost all of the time. We currently, like I said, are across the district. So we're at Northrop, Hawthorne, Mighty Oaks, and Hoover Early Learning Schools. And really, what's really important about what we do is we are often the first look at the rest of the school district, and we want to create a great impression and a great first start for families so they feel comfortable walking into any building. We currently offer programs, mainly during the school months of the year. We do offer some summer programming for families along with some limited partnership programming that happens throughout the summer. We partner with many community partners, such as Jeremiah Program, Homestead County Public Health, and the list goes on. We'll show those later. And then we also are unique in the sense that we have to have an advisory council that helps guide our work and make sure that we're really serving our community out large. And then we also do an annual community needs assessment to make sure that we're gathering feedback beyond just our participants. And that is all I have for you. And I have two fantastic, I have two fantastic parent participants who have just been really wonderful advocates for us. Both have participated in our advisory council and spoken to legislators about the work we do. And there is no program like our dad's program. It is unique and exciting and fun. And fun fact, I started as a teacher with these guys and now have moved into the manager role, and I miss being in their classroom because it's really, it's really a lot of fun. So I will let these two chat. You two can decide who goes first. I have Brad and Peter.
Hi. First, thank you for all of your hard work, performing a very difficult job. The hard work is seen and heard and appreciated, even when that feels like it's hard to believe. So thank you. So I am Chuck Feinman-Sweene. I'm a stay-at-home dad. I have two kids aged six and four, Lucy and Gus. My wife is a physician at Mayo, and I've been attending para classes for the last six years, mostly the dad and me class, but a few of the others. And what I'm going to talk about tonight is emotional intelligence. I think you can make a good argument that emotional intelligence is the foundation of parenting, or at least parenting without losing your sanity. I'm not an expert on emotional intelligence, and I even struggle a little bit with that term. What makes more sense to me is emotional fitness. And I often think of an analogy to physical fitness. So let's say you're a runner and you are in peak fitness for an upcoming marathon. Being in peak fitness doesn't mean that you choose the path of the marathon. It doesn't mean you choose whether the course goes up or downhill. It doesn't mean you choose the direction of the wind or its speed. It just means that, no matter the conditions, you've got what it takes to keep running. And even though I often talk a big game, I am certain of very few things about parenting. One of the things of which I am certain, though, is that as parents, our influence is limited, and we control almost nothing. So what pair teaches us, parents, is emotional fitness, so that we can handle all of those things that we don't control. We don't choose the paths that our children take. And at one time or another, I'm sure all of us wish that our children were on a different path. What pair teaches is that whether the path goes up or down, whether it's crooked or straight, we have what it takes to handle it, and we can keep running with our kids until they can run by themselves. I'll stipulate that we will probably run with our kids farther than we originally thought we would need to. So I've said it many times before. I will say it again and again and again to anybody who will listen. I am a better husband, father, friend, and human being, thanks to my experience with pair.
All right. I'm Peter Lorenz. Like Chuck, I've been going to para classes for six years now. I have twin six-year-olds, and I have twin one-year-olds. So I only make twins. We moved here in 2016, didn't know a soul, signed up for New Parenting in Rochester, and we still have friends from that class. Pair gives you relationships. You need relationships with your kids, other parents, with the community, so that you can learn, you can grow, you can build trust. As parents, it takes the village to raise a kid. Pair gives you the village. They give you where to find the village if it's not in your class. They give you the resources. They give you the teachers with the experience or the know-how. They give you the respect, too, that you're a parent now, and you make mistakes, and that's okay. Come, talk about it, learn from it. Go make the mistake again. Come back, talk about it again, and grow from it. Because if we're not growing and building relationships based on the trust we have in class that you can admit that you're wrong with the respect that I don't agree with you, but we're in class together, we're raising six-year-olds together in the community, and we want the community to grow, we need pair. Or at least, pair gives us the tools to then take out to the community. And I've been in the Welcome to Rochester Dad's Class brand, like the Little Itty-Bitty Kid. I've been in a bunch of classes. So I've seen grandparents in class. I've seen many different ethnicities. The socioeconomic spectrum is in pair. It is the community. It is the community. Community Ed brings the community together. So they've done a great job in building it and we need to keep growing it. I'm president of the advisory council this year. You'll probably get emails from me. We need to keep making it bigger. Thank you very much for inviting me. Thank you very much for listening to us tonight.
And I get the last slide. And as always, we are not alone in these efforts and we know that our community brings a lot to the table. So we thought we would show you a variety of the partners that we work closely with to make this happen. It's in our DNA, as the title says. And we often, that's the first person we call or the first organization we call when we have a new idea is who can we come together with to make maximum use of our resources to make this impact on our community. Something like that? Are there also any questions?
Mr. Barlow.
Well, more in the form of a statement than a question. And, you know, oftentimes we, as members of the board, hear about problems and/or statements in terms of what is wrong, what the district and what the district should be doing and ought to be doing. And I'm thankful that, first of all, to the board leadership, that Chair Marvin and Vice Chair Nathan saw the wisdom in establishing focused topics, which allows the board, but more so the community, to hear of the great things that are occurring that oftentimes the media may not cover or may not necessarily have the awareness of taxpayer concern. And yet I see the value, you know, be it as dads, you know, when I was, when my wife and I were raising six kids, we didn't have a pair. We just had, learn from your mistakes and then your mistakes again, then your mistakes again. But, and I won't focus on any particular area, although I see value in each and for the program managers, you know, appreciate what you're doing. We can see the value, the benefit, and the need. And I hope the public becomes more appreciative of what Rochester Public Schools actually does and the multiplicity of services we provide. And at the same time, the realization that we don't do it on our own. The partnership list obviously is important that allows everyone to realize that we do this in concert with a number of significant community partners. And we ultimately would like parents to be a part of that listing. And so in saying that, you know, I'm hopeful that each parent, each adult, be it grandparent or taxpayer, would see themselves in Rochester Public Schools and a role that they can play. I know we're open to it and you'll be hearing more from us regarding how you can become involved. So again, kudos, Amy, you're doing a great job in addition to your new job or additional duties, but, and then briefly, several of my grandchildren have been able to participate through the early childhood education, both at Mighty Oaks and Hoover Early Learning Center, and I see the value and benefit. One of my daughters who, public school really wasn't for her as she went to school in Alaska. And when she chose to move down here, spend a little time with mom and dad, she, I made her aware of Community Ed and she enrolled in the GED program. And also as a result of the partnership with Mayo Clinic, ultimately became a Mayo Clinic employee. And so these programs work. They're not just, you know, things we do, but they are, programs are changing lives. And again, thank you for what you're doing.
And let me just say, Ms. Hernandez Vargas and Jessie, when we ask what does success look like, this is what it looks like. And dads, that you have not locked your kids up in closets? Or maybe you have. I don't judge. This is what success looks like. So thank you to the employees for sure and to the participants, absolutely. You make our community better. Nice job, Amy. Ms. Workman.
Yeah. The consistent theme that I heard from all of you tonight was belonging. And not just a sense of belonging, but real, true belonging. I remember when I was a new mom, probably, my kids are the age of some of you are now. And one of the most important things was to feel you are not alone in your struggles with parenting. I think when I brought my kids home from the hospital, three boys, three trips, somehow in the rush, the parenting manual that came with them got lost and they were all so different. And it just, the program was a little bit more in its infancy when I first came here and started having kids, but, and it's grown. And the dad's program, this is just awesome. And I'm so glad that you guys talked. I'm so glad that the managers came and talked and that Jessie was here so that we could experience a little bit through his mom, some of his struggles and successes here in Rochester. So this is, this is a jewel. This program is a jewel and we just can't hide it. We have to keep shouting it. It's awesome. Thank you.
Ms. Nathan.
So I was one of those parents who brought my infant to pair in his carrier, I won't tell you how many years ago. And I attended the Early Childhood Family Education Advisory Committee meeting. It was my first official duty, I guess, after being elected to the board the first time. And one of the things that really impressed me was the leadership development that happens there. I know some of your members have gone on to found their own non-for-profit organizations carrying that message of serving parents from what they learned through you out into the community. I hope we'll see some future leaders in this district because I think you do a great job teaching about advocacy and about raising, raising the parent voice. I also had the pleasure of working with Rochester Family Literacy through the PTA a few years ago when we were able to come in and do our Urban Family Engagement Network class. And meeting those parents, parents like you, bringing all of your individual stories and histories and your hopes for yourself and for your children. And then we were able actually to bring them to a school board meeting and it was, it was one of the best things that I've been involved with because when you talk about the diversity of the community, that is, and Julie talked about the jewel, those are the jewels of diversity of our community. And I think what we do for all of our adults benefits our kids, whether it's directly through parenting or whether it's through taking care of adults with exceptional abilities. The fact that we have such a focus on adults sets examples for our children, but also directly benefits them. So I appreciate everything that you do. I look forward to hearing more about it in the future and thanks for coming tonight.
Thank you so much. Dr. Pecal, you've got some big shoes to fill here. Seven point oh one, the strategic plan implementation.
I just want to add my thanks and as a young dad, I had no pair. All I had was prayer and it didn't sort of, we came out okay, but it would have been better if I had.
You needed both.
I needed both, yeah. I think we are getting up, and we do have a PowerPoint to inflict on the board. This is an update on the strategy for implementing the Rochester Public Schools strategic plan. And this session really is a preparation for a discussion that the board is going to have at its study session the week after next. And in part, we're doing this preparation so the community gets a glimpse of the fact that we know a strategic plan that sits on the shelf doesn't do any good. And so we're putting as much thought into implementation of the strategic plan as went into the year-long development of the strategic plan. The action item that this presentation is setting up, which the board will discuss at its study session, is a proposal to change what Director Barlow was just talking about a moment ago, the focus topics at board meetings to align with the new strategic plan and also a shift in how the board uses its study sessions. And so that's where all of this is headed, but want to give you an overview broadly of how we're thinking about implementing the strategic plan. Because I know that for only a very few people, implementing a strategic plan is not a really exciting, thrilling topic. Director Nathan is clearly an exception to that and I say that with respect. I'm going to move through this quickly, but stop me at any point. And again, we will have time in the study session to go deeper into this. So if we can bring back the PowerPoint, that would be great. So our strategic plan is an ambitious one. It's one that actually calls for really profound systematic change to address the fact that as we just heard from participants in that last conversation, kids today are going to be living in a changed world. They're going to be living in a world that is dramatically more diverse. They're also going to be living in a world that is driven by artificial intelligence and automation in which knowledge and skills and abilities that could support a family in previous generations are going to look very, very different when the young people we're educating now are adults and contributing citizens. So while I think our plan is appropriately comprehensive and complex, we also know that if everything's important, nothing's important. And so we have got a strategy to essentially divide up the labor in implementing this plan at three levels. Of course, critically is the school level. And that's where, as I'll describe briefly in a moment, we are putting in place a very different approach to continuous improvement planning that is aligned with the objectives of our strategic plan. The second level are the system change initiatives that are called for in the plan that exist at the district-wide level. And then finally, as I mentioned, there is the critical role for the Rochester School Board in guiding the plan and monitoring the implementation and making adjustments as we learn lessons along the way. Strategic plans, of course, are all about initiatives and measures and flow charts and things like that, but they also are about people and they're about culture and they're about processes. And so shortly after I had the opportunity to accept the board's offer to remain here beyond an interim period, I met with representatives of every bargaining unit in the school district, all of the directors, all of the cabinet members, and teams from every one of our schools and programs to talk about how it feels to work here and how the culture is today and where people would like to see it go in the future. That yielded, as I've shared with board members previously, about 27 different themes. Since that time, we've worked with leaders across the district to distill those themes into five really critical commitments for collaboration that will be guiding the work that we will be doing over the next three years to implement this plan. You might think of these as principles that we're going to seek to adhere to and they're very Rochester specific. They come out of the feedback that I heard and pretty carefully recorded and distilled and that then other people have reacted to and refined. So what are they? The first is keep the main thing the main thing. A limited number of priorities is critical and that may seem like a blinding flash of the obvious, but at a time when the needs of our students are so great, it's tempting to continually add new priorities to our list. And if we do that, we undermine our ability to address the critical things. And so when the board voted seven to zero to approve that strategic plan, we put a line in the sand about an ambitious but achievable set of priorities. And what we heard from our folks is please don't keep adding to that priorities. And that's going to require a level of discipline from all of us, including myself. Superintendents are prone to go off to conferences and come back excited about some new idea or new initiative and say, okay, here's the new direction. We can take new ideas that add to the direction we've already adopted. So focus on a limited number of priorities. Number two, assume positive intent. When we're dealing with difficult issues that at a time of constrained resources, tough choices are required. And so across the district, from wherever vantage point we're all working, we want to assume that we all want the best for our students. If that proves not to be the case, we can deal with it, but let's begin with the assumption of positive intent on behalf of Rochester kids. Engage the people who will be implementing the work early and often. One of the dangers of any organizational change initiative is that a superintendent or a CEO or a school board chair says, here's the direction, everybody march, let's go. And we don't adequately engage people who are critically required to bring the work to life. This is something I heard about a lot in our district and the really urgent need to have continual feedback loops from people who are working most directly with kids or most directly on the front lines of the operational change initiatives that are also called for in the plan. Number four, data. A lot of us who get into education are passionate about our beliefs and our assumptions, but we want to have this plan be guided by evidence. Sometimes that evidence will be the kind that Peter Ruck and his PhD bring to us and other times it will be a teacher or a group of teachers making hashtags on a piece of paper during a class to count how many kids respond to questioning in a certain way that's different from the way that teacher's usually done it. And so data with a small d or a big D, but to have evidence be a hallmark of our plan. And then interestingly, in the presentation we just had on community education, talking about a place, safe place to make mistakes, all of Rochester Public Schools needs to be a safe place to make mistakes. We need to have a growth mindset about this organizational change work and continually learn from what works so we can do it more and better and what doesn't so that we can correct course. So digging into some of the mechanics, school-wide continuous improvement plans, or skips, will be the term that at least for now, until someone comes up with an alternative, we'll be using to describe a new approach to improvement planning that will be aligned with the goals of our strategic plan. And one of the things that we're going to be doing is to require schools to be sure that all of the critical perspectives in terms of organizational improvement at the school level are represented on their skip teams. Schools will have flexibility to decide who exactly within the categories that are listed on the slide are on those teams, but we are going to say you need all of those perspectives. Board members will note on the last bullet that students and parents or other caregivers are, we encourage integrating them onto that team. That is something that I think in my experience with that kind of work is a mistake to mandate. The school needs to be ready and to have a space for people who don't collect a check from Rochester Public Schools to be there at that improvement team. Same with students. It can be incredibly powerful, but it needs to be authentic and done well. So we'll be encouraging it. We'll be highlighting it where it happens and it works. And we will definitely build into the process very explicit ways for parents and caregivers and students to provide feedback on the decisions that the teams are making. So even if they're not on the teams themselves, there will be very clear opportunities for their engagement. There will be goals in four key areas that our schools will build their plans around. The first, of course, are their student academic knowledge and skills with a critical emphasis on the core academic subjects, but also in other subjects, areas as well. Students' social emotional skills, the term that is most often today used for what we used to call soft skills, skills like motivation, problem solving, perseverance, relationship building capacity. The third will be creating high-quality learning environments for all students. And the fourth will be a high-quality work environment for all staff. Schools will choose at least one goal in each of those areas and in the document that board members received and that is on our website, there are the specific measures that schools can choose from for the first year of the plan to align their work around. If there's another goal that is measurable that the schools want to adopt that is not on the list that board members received for this meeting, that certainly would be allowable, but that will be a dialogue with Jackie Peterson and her team in the Office of School Support because we want to make sure that all of the goals that we're adopting are aligned with the plan the board approved and measurable. I'll also say that the measures that are in the document you received for tonight are what I consider measurement one point oh. They're the measures we have today. I think there are more innovative, more holistic measures that we can put in place over time, but we want to begin this plan with some urgency this year and so we've aligned with the measures that we can collect today. For instance, I think there are some other ways we could measure competencies that are in the RPS graduate profile that we don't have today that we can build toward over the course of this next year. One slide that I left out of the PowerPoint, but it's in the memo, is that in pursuing each of these goals, our schools will be asked to think about eight levers for change that have emerged from the research on school improvement. And those are relationships, creating developmental connections for kids with adults and with each other. Second is curriculum, having high-quality, rich, rigorous curriculum in the subjects we're teaching. Professional development for staff, where they learn new knowledge, new skills. Professional learning communities where they practice those new knowledge, that new knowledge and skills and applying it in their work. and skills, and applying it in their work. Formative assessment and other data, data that is designed to inform instruction, inform interventions with kids. Social-emotional learning, how do you actually tap kids' soft skills, to use that old term, in the learning that's taking place both in and beyond the classroom. Family engagement, how are parenting adults and other caregivers informed of and engaged in schools' efforts to achieve these goals? And then targeted interventions for kids who are struggling, such that we have got a great Tier One for all kids, solid, viable, guaranteed curriculum and instruction. Tier Two interventions for kids who need additional support but not intensive support. And at the top of the pyramid, intensive interventions for kids who really need additional assistance. So for each goal that they set, the schools will be asked to consider all eight of those levers, which, as I noted, have emerged from really decades of research on school improvement. This will be a process that is iterative and organic, and so we are going to be working with what, at least right now, we're calling our Rochester Public Schools Change Process. This is unique to Rochester Public Schools. It doesn't come off the shelf, but it is aligned with a lot of the research on continuous improvement in organizations. And as at least Chair Marvin knows, I love a good acronym, and so I spent an unhealthy amount of time when I was locked up, quarantined with COVID, looking for words that started with C-H-A-N-G-N-E. And I came up with these stages of our process. The process will include critiquing our work, looking at the strengths and looking at the gaps, and where we are succeeding and where we are not. It will then move into hypothesizing. Why do we think we're making progress? Why do we actually think we are not? And what are our hypotheses about improvement? If we adopt this curriculum, if we change this structure, if we put in place this program, what do we think will happen? The third phase, of course, is action, which needs to happen with fidelity and transparency. The neutralize phase is one that I think a lot of organizational change efforts miss, and that is what is going wrong as a part of your change initiative? What are the unintended consequences that you need to neutralize? Similarly, what is a roadblock that is getting in the way of the otherwise good work that you're doing, such that the process requires you to stop and think, hmm, we're working hard here, hopefully some really good things are happening. What are the roadblocks, and are there unintended consequences from the initiatives that we've put in place that we need to address? The grow phase will be about, if it's working in one classroom, how do we feather it out across more classrooms? If it's working in one school, how do we feather it across more schools? And the embed phase, again, one that often gets left out of continuous improvement processes, how do we not just have this be the work of the school improvement team? How does this just become the way we do things at Mayo High School, or at Sunset Terrace, or at Kellogg Middle School, and embedding it in our everyday processes and culture? That's obviously not a linear process. At times, there'll be one or more of those phases happening, but we are going to be building that out into a defined process that our school improvement teams will be thinking about. So that's our Level One for implementing the plan at the school level. The second level are what we called systems change strategies in the strategic plan, and these are initiatives that are called for in the plan that really rest with those of us who are working here at the central administration level. And so collaborative teams will be identified to move each one of these forward. And I will say, as you're about to see on the screen and as you saw in the memo, there's two waves here. One wave starts this fall, and we literally have the team leads identified, and in September we'll be getting ready to kick off these processes. The second wave starts in the fall of 2023. And that was tough to actually stagger it, because my instinct is to start all of it right now. If we start all of it right now, I think we failed to listen to that first principle that we had articulated, which is if everything's important, nothing's important. And so the fact that some of these initiatives are in Wave One and some are in Wave Two is not indicative of their importance, it's just the capacity to do these things well. It also doesn't mean nothing will be happening in these areas before the wave hits. There is a lot of work that is already going on in each of these areas in the district that will continue. These are when we're bringing together structured, carefully facilitated teams to envision the change and develop detailed plans for the change. So what are they? First, culturally responsive, deeper learning, which is the core academic emphasis that emerged out of our strategic planning process. We'll have lots more time to talk about this, but deeper learning meaning kids are mastering, really truly mastering, critical bodies of academic knowledge and skill, and the deeper learning piece is applying that to real-world scenarios and problems. So I didn't just learn the formula, I can apply the formula to some type of a problem set that is related to life in the real world, or especially that is applied and interactive. The culturally responsive piece, of course, it's delivered in ways that see culture as an asset and are reflective of the fact that our students come from different backgrounds and that all of them need to feel academically challenged and valued as learners. So that effort is a Wave One effort. Our new chief academic officer, Dr. Effay Agbamu, who is recovering from a leg fracture and is very, very stressed about not being here in Rochester these first weeks, is doing well, and I know watching online, and will play a critical role in leading that effort. The same will be true of our multi-tiered systems of support. We'll be beginning an audit with the University of Minnesota to look at the degree to which we have those interventions in place for kids who struggle. That is academic, but it is also behavioral, social, emotional, with a mental health. We're going to learn some things about our supports for kids beyond the academic realm through that process as well, and we're kicking that off with Dr. Kim Gibbons from the university on Thursday with all of our administrators. As the board knows, we are already well underway with a strategy to enhance school belonging and behavior. Up to this point, it has focused on our middle schools and high schools, and through the strategic plan, it will extend to our elementary schools and early childhood. Fourth, the portfolio of schools initiative, which is really where we want to try and make sure we get the chessboard right in Rochester to be the provider of choice for Rochester families. That's where we're going to be dealing with issues like school start times, transportation to the district-wide option schools, the attendance area for Longfellow, creating a middle school area learning center, the very important next steps that we need to take to make sure that we're meeting the needs of all Rochester families who choose to entrust their students to us. Number five, we heard earlier in this session about the amazing work that's already happening through community education, and broadening that to a systematic approach to partnerships, especially enriching and extending learning beyond the school day, with an emphasis, I think, based on what we've heard in recent months, with extracurriculars at the middle school level as being a particularly important near-term opportunity. Leadership development, we have a new director of leadership development, Eric Johnson, previously principal at John Marshall, and starting with comprehensive development of our current and future leaders in the school district. We also have another talented former principal in Heather Hogan, who will be in the Office of Equity and Engagement, leading our post-secondary and career pathways work to ensure every kid has a vision and is doing the work they need to do to be ready for success in the workplace, post-secondary education, and citizenship. Student social-emotional well-being and mental health, an urgent need that we've talked about previously on a number of occasions. Family engagement, creating a framework that will articulate, based on current research, the most effective ways to truly partner with families, to help them support their students and to be sure that we're meeting their needs. And then number 10, beginning to lay the groundwork for the referendum that the board's budget deficit reduction strategy calls for us to put before the voters of Rochester either in the fall of 2023 or 2024, or both. So that's our Wave One set of strategies. Hopefully, that ambitious list makes it clear why we needed to defer some things to Wave Two. Those waves are, number one, taking a look at our funding formula. How do we allocate our general fund dollars, compensatory education dollars, achievement and integration dollars, title, federal Title I dollars, all in ways to improve student outcomes at the school level, a very, very important discussion that, of course, the board will be very involved in. Enhancing our recruitment and retention and induction for all staff. Two particular priorities that emerged out of the strategic plan, as you know, are increasing the diversity of our staff and increasing the induction support we provide for new employees, in particular for our education support professionals, formerly called paraprofessionals in the district, who frankly don't get much right now, and that we need to dramatically enhance that. The board's work to review board policy in a very systematic way for equity. Like a lot of these things, that is happening in many ways right now, but in that year of the plan, we'll be putting in place, supporting the board in putting in place, a very intentional and intensive, and I think probably transparent, initiative to do that. Adding and dramatically enhancing our capacity to secure grants from philanthropic funders and from federal and state governments will be a Wave Two priority. Launching a parent empowerment program to ensure that parents who may not be familiar with the American education system, or may not have been successful, had good experiences in their own education, really know how to help their kids succeed in school and how to navigate our system. Youth voice and leadership, another Wave Two priority. Youth voice, meaning making sure that our schools are hearing kids about their educational experiences and their needs. Youth leadership being really developing the leaders of our schools today and our society tomorrow. We heard a little bit earlier in this meeting about our really amazing early childhood programs in the district. Our biggest barrier right now to getting more families into those programs is transportation, and so that would be a Wave Two priority for us as well. And then mental health for staff. Again, all of these Wave Two priorities all have some initiatives in place at present, but there would be a significantly enhanced, well, a dramatically enhanced focus on them as part of the strategic plan effort. The board will review these strategic change initiatives in the meeting proposal that I'm about to briefly walk you through right now, but I think it's really important to point out that almost all of them will cultivate in board votes, that these change initiatives, eventually, as the work comes to be fruition and ready for prime time, are, I think, almost in every instance going to come back to this table for decision-making. You've approved the plan, the plan is the general direction. We all know the devil is often in the details, and so all of these things will be coming to the board as the processes move forward. So, final point in this presentation, and this will be a subject of discussion at our study session. How does the board, with this very ambitious strategy, provide the governance and guidance that it's your responsibility and opportunity to provide? And so a proposal that I've worked out with the Chair and Vice Chair would suggest that we align the focus topic section of each regular board meeting and our study sessions with the strategic plan, plus two other intensive points in the year where the board would do a comprehensive review of our progress. So if we think about our meetings as generally being two regular board meetings and a study session each month, with some months like July where that doesn't happen. In the first regular board meeting, the focus topic would include an update from one of our schools or programs on their skip, their school-wide continuous improvement plan. So it'll be a deep look at that school's effort to bring the plan to life. In the study session, we would take a deep dive into one of those for next year 10 systems change initiatives, where we would be bringing to the board background data, information, bringing key participants in the planning team together to give board members an opportunity to probe, make suggestions, ask questions of clarification. But then, in order to extend that discussion of those important system changes, that same system change initiative would also be the focus topic in the next board meeting that month. So essentially, you'd have a twofer for each of these system change initiatives. You'd have a study session, and you'd have a focus topic at a board meeting. Finally, there would be two points in the year where you would take a comprehensive look at the plan as a whole. In November, we would do a comprehensive review of where we are in terms of data on our implementation and our outcomes. That is time to go with the state-required submission of our World's Best Workforce Plan to the state of Minnesota, so that's why November. And then when you approve the budget in June, we would also provide the board with a comprehensive review of the investments we're making in the strategic plan. So how much are we investing in multi-tiered systems of support? How much are we investing in induction? How much are we investing? And then how many staff positions are we allocating? And you also, in June, would be getting a brief on what the plans for the following year would be. So those would be two opportunities that would be pretty intensive that we'd schedule. If the board chooses to either head in this direction with the new meeting strategy or revise it after our upcoming study session, then I'll work with the Chair and the Vice Chair to calendar all of this out, so that we can have an annual board calendar that reflects this revised direction, certainly by early September. But we want to be inclusive in having a discussion about whether this strategy for board meetings is going to meet your needs as board members individually and collectively. So I know that's a lot of process discussion. If nothing else, I hope you and anybody who's watching take from this, as I said at the outset, that we see the implementation of this plan as something that needs to be as cared for as the development of the plan was as well. So, Madam Chair?
Thank you. And you did all of that without notes. That's impressive.
Well, the PowerPoint's kind of notes.
Yeah, but it was, that was pretty good.
Okay.
Questions or comments? Ms. Nathan?
I know you put it in the larger document. Do you want to say a little bit more about the data dashboard?
Oh, yeah. Thank you. Thank you. We have purchased a new software platform that the board has approved called EduClimber, and what it will allow us to do at the school level is to drill down into these data sets with dramatically greater ease than currently can happen. Currently, someone in the school has to call down here and ask, essentially, our one research director to run these reports, and we have one staff person who helps out. So on one hand, the EduClimber internally is going to make it possible for teachers, principals, school leaders, central office staff, to look at the progress of this plan for decision-making purposes. It also will be able to roll this stuff up, so that we will be able to create this fall on our website dashboards that the community can review for what are our goals for each school and for the district as a whole, and what progress are we making toward reaching those goals. The reason the software is important is because if we build all of the stuff that requires, like, labor-intensive staff time to produce these reports, we're spending time producing reports instead of meeting kids' needs. And so that's why building, getting a platform that will allow us to essentially automate this process is going to be a really critical part of the strategy. So thank you for mentioning that.
Ms. McLaughlin? I just want to say thank you that, thinking back to where we started a year ago with the strategic plan, you know, it was such a big project to undergo, and seeing that develop and knowing that there was a lot of challenges in that process, it's really great to see the specifics now, and the implementation was always a big question for me. It's really great to see this in words, so that we know where the path is that we're going. So, thank you.
Mr. Barlow?
And this is probably more in the form of a request. Under your Wave One change strategies, number one, culturally responsive, deeper learning, I like how you kind of broke that into two. And yet, I've heard at different candidate forums, school board candidate forums, sometimes a statement made, aren't we all just Americans? And so I only raise that as this may present an opportunity to build out the understanding that, yes, we all are Americans, but there are cultural differences that relate to learning, instruction, capacity, and how we can all benefit from that. And so will that be something that maybe at the study session we'll be able to dig a little deeper in, so that there's a community understanding? Because the one thing we don't want to do is have a misunderstanding in the community as to what we mean by what we say, and so we can be very clear in what we mean, so people can then understand what it is we mean, and then they may make a choice to say something else, but at least they will know what we mean. And so, is that possible?
Yeah. Director Barlow, thank you for asking that question. Our outcomes are different along lines of race, culture, language, and other demographic factors, and so it's nonsensical to think we could address those outcomes without factoring into it race, culture, and other factors. Those are where the differences lie. The idea that we could effectively address those things without taking that into account would be to sort of suggest that we can somehow solve the problem without addressing the problem. When kids encounter academic curriculum, and this is all about academic success, if they never see their communities represented and celebrated in that curriculum, it's a disincentive to embrace it. If curriculum and instruction sends the message that kids like you don't do well in this class, it's a disincentive to invest in that journey. And so when we talk about culturally responsive, deeper learning, it is simply making sure that we are affirming the lived experience of the kids that we are privileged to educate in a positive way, and that also avoids the signals that we can send to kids that can be highly problematic for their academic success. There is decades of research. There is decades of research conclusively proving that stereotype threat is a real thing, that when you send a message to a woman going, or a girl going into a science class, for instance, or a student of color going into an advanced placement class, that they, for whatever reason, don't belong there, not only is that sort of, at least in my view, morally problematic, we know it is a tremendous drag on their ability to learn because they are redirecting the mental processing from the academic content to buffer against the threat that you think, I actually don't belong in this class. And that's not just an issue for people who are from groups that are underrepresented in learning environments. My favorite example of stereotype threat actually was a study that was done at Stanford University a number of years ago with white male students in a math environment. So this is an elite, elite university. These are superstars. They were white college students, and they were about to take a math test. And like in any one of these experiments, they were divided into two random groups. And the first group was simply said, you know, thank you for coming this morning, we want to see how you're doing in mathematics, please take this exam, do your best, and turn it in when you're done. Second group, randomly selected, again, identical white male students from Stanford, right before they took the test, the exam administrator said, you know, we are so glad that you would do this because we're hoping this study will help us understand why white males do worse than Asian students on this test most every time. Gave the test. What do you think happened to the white males in the class where they had suggested you're not as good as someone else? Dramatic decline in their performance relative to the kids who did it without that pressure. That suggestion that you're not good enough diverted their mental energy that should have gone to the test to buffering against this sense that, I, what do you mean? I'm not as good as those other kids. And this was not a group that is susceptible traditionally to stereotype threat. Imagine when that happens to a kid who has had that message reinforced for years. So when we talk about culturally responsive, it's programming against that. It's saying there are things we can do to buffer against stereotype threat, and have seen. There are other studies that have shown, back to the issue of girls and engineering, that when you put things on the classroom walls and you change nothing in the curriculum that are traditionally male, you have a dramatic decrease in the GPA of girls in the class than if you take the stuff out and you don't send the message that this is something for guys, and you're here doing something that's really for guys. So I could go on with all of these things, but all we're trying to do is create environments in which every kid, we set high expectations for them, and we convey very clearly, we expect you to meet these expectations because we believe in you.
Thank you, and I'd like to say I knew that. I know much of that, not to the degree that you expressed it, though. And I think it's useful for our community to hear that, to understand it, to be given an opportunity to process that. And so I'm excited, I'm looking forward to the study session and ultimately what this plan will, how it will greatly improve and enhance Rochester Public Schools, so thank you.
Ms. Workman.
So one example I'd like to share that still sticks in my brain was when I was in eighth grade, and that was a very long time ago. And we had to write a theme as to why you liked being a boy or why you liked being a girl. I got an A on mine, and it was like, I was really proud of this, and I took it home. But I said, I liked being a girl because not as much was expected of girls. And my father went, what? And my mother said, well, you know, she's right. My life changed instantly. I think it was for the better, but just an example of how, you know, a kid thinks about themselves in relation to other people and those things. So I very much appreciate what you said. And also, Director Barlow, thank you.
Ms. Nathan.
I think the theme that continues from when we first saw the strategic plan to the implementation is just how Rochester-specific this is. I think, you know, there's the phrase, the canned curriculum, right? The canned plan. And I know that there are places that you could go and you can bring in experts, and they can impose something on an organization. But there's no question that this wouldn't work somewhere else because it didn't get all the inputs that we got from our community. It's not going to be our people. Our people are doing this, we're not bringing in other people, we're using our people. We have our very own acronym, which I might be a little too excited about. And the system change strategies are responsive to not just what we found through the strategic plan, but we know there are themes that have been bubbling through the district for a number of years, and it's exciting to see that we have a system, a systematic process that we're going to be able to address them, even though all at once. And I also appreciate that we're bringing in the research piece. I think that's, something can be customized to a local community and can involve all the inputs from the community, but unless we measure it against best practices, I think it's, it gets too propient. So I appreciate that balance that we have in this, so thank you.
And I just want to come back to, this plan has been presented in a couple of different, few different formats. One is a roadmap, one as the packet with all the specifics there, one as a set of concentric circles. But the thing that our community told us, our staff told us, and that you continue to focus on, is the student is right in the center. What we do, we do for those kids, and we never forget that. And our goal is not to roll out standardized students, but to discover who that child is, help that child discover who they are, and then provide them as many different ways as we can for that kid, for every kid, to be successful. And we've got that in your circle, multicolored circle thing. And it goes throughout the entire strategic plan, that it, you know, for those people who kind of get carried away with charts and data, it all comes back to, how do we need, what do we need to do so we can serve kids better? And part of that means supporting parents, part of that means supporting staff, much of that means listening and figuring out what works and not giving up, and then going back again until we get it as right as we can. So I think even the formats we have are useful because we have a diverse community with different ways of processing information, and I've never been as excited about a district plan as I am about this one. I think it's, it's going to go, it's going to get us all moving in the same direction. Other questions or comments? Okay, it's not even seven o'clock yet, and I know that we'll be sad if this meeting ends soon, but we only have two more things. First, you have the annual board calendar draft, so you can look at that, and then do any board members have other items that like to be considered in a future agenda?
Oh, I just have an inquiry regarding a study session or so ago when Dr. Rock made presentation in terms of our discipline data. And I, at that time, had raised or inquired about the police department information. Has that been, maybe I, in my scanning the calendar overlooked it? Is that something that has been?
And that's going to be September?
We haven't scheduled it yet because we're going to put together the entire revised board calendar after the next study session. So it will be put on a date once we, we're going to, if you adopt the proposal I outlined tonight, then the whole board calendar will be redesigned tied to the plan, and we'll insert it in the fall.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other issues? All right, then it is 6:55, and we are adjourned.